And the City Council of City of Alpine, Texas, will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on May 17th, 2022, in City Council chambers at 803 West Holland Avenue in the City of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Media Act, Government Code Section 551.043. Public notice, the use of cellular phones and electronic equipment is prohibited in the City Council chambers during meetings of the City Council, except for the purpose explicitly authorized by state law, Texas Government Code Section 551.023. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the official rules of decorum for the City Council meetings available at www.cityofalpine.com decorum. Public comments are limited to the agenda items only. Individuals who wish to address the City Council may do so by completing the public comment card and by placing the completed card on the City Secretary's desk no later than five minutes before the commencement of the meeting. The public comment card may also be completed online A public comment card is not required for speakers who wish to comment on public hearing items. When speakers are acknowledged, please approach the microphone at the podium and state your name and ward for the record. Public comments are limited to three per meeting, and a bell will signal the end of each speaker's time. Please conclude speaker comments promptly when the bell rings. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or City Council members have been called upon of order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. Call this written order with vice for the pledge. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, all the council members are present here today. The notice of this meeting was posted on May 13th by 2:00 PM.
Okay, any public comments?
No, sir.
None? Okay, canvas of May 2nd, 2022, general election.
Approved ordinance 2022-05-01, an ordinance candidacy in the return to declaring the results of the May 7th, 2022, general election held for the purpose of electing citizens of Alpine to the offices of City Council Member Ward 2, City Council Member Ward 4, and Mayor.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, second. Okay, any discussion? See none, all those in favor, put your right hand. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, issuance of certificates of elections and signing the statement of elected officials. And we'll go ahead and get that proceeding going. We're gonna start first of all with Ward 2. Chris Rodriguez, please come forward. Okay, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that at a general election held on May 7th, on the 7th day of May 22nd, 2022, I'm sorry, May 2022, Chris Rodriguez was duly elected City Council Ward 2. In testimony therefore, I have hereby sign my name and cause the seal of Alpine to be affixed in the City of Alpine, Texas. Please, Texas, this is the 17th day of May 22nd, Andres Ramos, Honorable Mayor.
Congratulations. All right. I set this down so I can raise my right hand. My glasses. All right, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chris Rodriguez, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Alpine City Council Member Ward 2 of the State of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations.
And next we'll have Ward 2, Council Member, Mr. Sondat, you step forward, sir. Ward 4, I'm sorry. Thank you. In the name of and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on May, on the 7th, May, day of May 2022, Martin Sondat, he was thus duly elected City Council Ward 4. In testimony where I have hereon signed my name and caused the seal of Alpine to be affixed in the City of Alpine, Texas, thus the 17th day of May 2022, Andres Ramos, Honorable Mayor, City of Alpine.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Martin Sondat,
I, Martin Sondat,
do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties. Let's try again, that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
execute the duties of the office of
of the office of
Alpine City Council Member Ward 4
Alpine City Council Member Ward 4
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas
and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws of the United States
of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this to certify that at a general election held on 7th day of May 2022, Catherine Ives was duly elected Mayor of Alpine. In testimony there were of, I have hereby signed my name and caused the seal of Alpine to be affixed on the City of Alpine, Texas, this 17th day, May 2022, Andres Ramos, Honorable Mayor.
Unfortunately, this district judge to have administered the oath of office to the mayors for 10, roughly 10 years, including, well, it was your first, but I'm not sure that was my first. But I've done two of yours until COVID shut us down. And I was telling them earlier, it's, it was a privilege to swear him in. Now it's, it's my privilege to swear him out.
But I'm ready.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Catherine Eaves,
I, Catherine Eaves,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties
of the office of
of the office of
City of Alpine Mayor
City of Alpine Mayor
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas
and will, to the best of my ability
and will, to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws
the Constitution and laws
of the United States
of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And now we turn the dabble over to the new elected mayor. Mayor?
Well, as my first duty as mayor, and I'm so honored, and I feel very blessed to be able to serve as your mayor, I have something to present to you for all of your years of service.
Thank you.
You're forever grateful for all you've done for our city. This is honoring Andres Andy Ramos in grateful recognition of your outstanding leadership and dedication to the staff and citizens of the City of Alpine, Texas, for six years as mayor.
Thank you very much. Don't get paid much, but it's the level of the city that we all, as council members, newly elected mayor myself, are part of this community and serve it. And we try to serve it as best we can. Thank you all very much for your support.
Official. Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Reports. City Mayor report, none this week. Next time. City Attorney report?
Nothing new today, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City Manager report?
Just a little one. I'm glad we had a great turnout. Thank you, everyone who's came to today's meeting. Congratulations to our new mayor and our Ward 2 and Ward 4 council members for another two years. And greatly appreciate your services. And wanted to do a little bit different this go around. And it's been about a year. And so I kind of wanted to do a real quick year in review of things that have been going on with the city. And we've actually accomplished quite a lot. And some of it's not visible. And a lot of it could be internal procedures and policies, but I wanted to go through it really fast. And just to give the public and council a little update. And at the beginning of this year, we had emergency repairs to our gas city gates in both Alpine and Fort Davis. This was a huge undertaking by our gas department. Council did allocate emergency funds in order to move forward with the project. And Randy did compromise with utilizing his operating current budget and moving those funds around accordingly. And the DIP project, which is required, it is mandated, where we replace so many steel lines, we're feet of steel lines with poly. Fort Davis has been completed for this year, and they're moving into Alpine. This is excellent for them. An aerator and automatic bar screen were approved in August. Jacob and Martin had done all of the paperwork and legwork to get that taken care of. And it's been a little bit of a headache for the water department and wastewater department. We learn fast that nothing goes as planned. And all know the puns that goes with that wastewater world. And they are currently working on getting the automated bar screen in. We've had a few setbacks. Keith has done a wonderful job with putting his foot down and saying, you messed up, you pay for it. And those are always, you know, tears to my heart here. And but we're currently working on it. And that aerator is a big deal. We've been without an aerator for almost 10 years. And so we're operating off of one. And putting that other one back in will relieve that plant and help. And we remodeled the new construction of the Alpine Schoolhouse and the Visitor Center. And we will do a little open house for the Visitor Center. I've waited until our Visitor Center coordinator comes back. She's currently out on leave. She was the forefront to getting that taken care of. And I want to make sure she's there and it's appreciated to give her credit. And unfortunately, with the Alpine Schoolhouse, we've had hiccups. They've been telephone, we're still pending their completion so that we actually can connect computers and have internet and phones. And we had another water break. So there is no water to the building currently. And because it's an outside break, our water department is assisting us to get that taken care of. The last water break cost the city close to six grand. So we're hoping that this will relieve some of the expense, but it does put some pressure on the water department as far as completion. And that building also will be open for a little open house. The remodel is absolutely beautiful, bringing that building back into the community and being used and having people centrally located right there to pay their bills will be a wonderful asset to the city. If you've never been in that building, it is the cutest, oldest schoolhouse. We did not take away some of the features from it. We just cleaned it up. We did not hurt the floors or harm them. We just went over them to protect them. And we do expect to have some heavy traffic in there. A fresh coat of paint goes a long way. And we had the HVAC updated so that the air conditioning and cooling. And when you walk in, the left-hand side of that building is actually not being used, and it was not remodeled. That's where the cafeteria and the kitchen are located. As we move down, we'll get that updated as well. I don't foresee the city keeping the actual kitchen equipment. They are definitely commercial stoves and cooktops, so those will be on an auction list hopefully soon. And we've been a little way at our purchase of capital assets. PD has purchased a trailer to assist them with moving their equipment, as well as the gas department. And there's an item later on in the agenda for more for the parks department. These are all purchased within our current operating budget. And all the departments are working at utilizing the best funding opportunities, whether it's our operating budget or like with the USDA. Budgeting on a smaller amount and hoping that the USDA provides the difference. So that will be a big push for us. Instead of getting a smaller mower, we'll go with a larger one. And that's, of course, like I said, it's further in the agenda. And all of our departments have done an awesome job with focusing on hiring qualified staff, training and certifications. As Mr. Seager mentioned last meeting, we have a B wastewater operator now. That is wonderful. But it doesn't just stop there. Our gas department gets their annual certifications and keeps up with them. We have two welders on staff, not something that you hear in a lot of smaller communities. And our water department has four employees who are studying to test for their D. This is important so that they can move up to get those other certifications. Our police department has taken training to a whole new level. They're focusing on a lot of what is locally and regionally available. They've been utilizing the academy in El Paso to ensure that they get those qualifications so that we can handle certain situations that come within our city. And another big thing that the city has done is we have 12 active grants, roughly at $1.9 million. And that's a huge deal for our city. We're trying our best to find every opportunity, whether it be a fully funded grant or a matching grant. Like I mentioned with the USDA, we budget so much, and then we have other entities that can help us out so that we can get the next best thing. And we were recently donated a canine dog. And we have not had a canine on our staff for quite some time. And this is a big deal. It's utilized a lot. Our law enforcement officer, Valerie Katani, will be going to train to be certified. And she's had the pleasure of working with, I cannot remember his name, she's a dog though, and over the past couple weeks since we've gotten him, breaking him in. He does come from a Haida out of New Mexico. So it's hard for me because they dispose of assets. And it's a living creature, it's a dog. So that Haida agency disposed of it, and we were lucky enough to be able to obtain that. And for 2021 audit, it was clean, no findings. The finance world, that is a very big deal. And we've improved our capital improvement plan, providing more information, making it more detailed, providing the pictures. That's going to continue into this year. And the city was put into some pretty hard decision with contracts with the Texas Disposal Systems, our EMS with Emergent and our West Texas Gas. These are things that we undertook and task force were created, and there was discussion and back and forth with them. Policies and procedures have been updated, and they continue to be updated. Council approved rules into form. We have an emergency operation plan. And it is still pending one section, but it's completed and presented, and we're moving forward with it. The Night Sky Ordinance, this one is a big deal for our community in our area. And we are now considered the world's largest night sky preserve in this area, or I think in the world, actually. So it's a, it's a pretty big deal. And we're a year into it. So we've done a lot of notification, a lot of education. We've actually had in-house training for our staff so that they can start understanding. Last meeting, a council approved the donation from the alliance that's going to provide us the light fixtures. So that's one expense we're not having to budget. And our next big push is sending out notifications to the different businesses and making sure they're in compliance. It is a five-year compliance, and we're one year in. So in four years, this area would need to become compliant. And we've rebuilt relationships with other governmental entities and agencies. That's important that we work as a team, all partners. We all live in this community together. And communication, we've updated the website. We've added more public comment features. We have a monthly newspaper article, and we utilize Facebook more. We're trying to get that information out as best we can with what resources we have. And we're reestablishing the job descriptions based on each department and their departmental needs. So we're taking everything back before council after departments have gone through and say, you know, what do I need? Maybe, maybe I don't need an administrative assistant. I need a different term for it, or making it more, I don't need a service worker. I want something dedicated to my department. And gas is different than water, and airport is different. But every department is being given the opportunity to redesign and to make sure it falls within. You know, what are we asking? What are our qualifications? Do we need to change them? And they're all coming back before council. This is important because it's also establishing some pay scales. It's putting that pay range in for each of these positions. And the City Council this year has allocated funds for specific city priorities. And we've allocated funds for the wastewater treatment plant, for generators, for the holiday and lift station. As, as money's become available through grants or the American Rescue Plan, council has dedicated these to ensure that these projects actually move forward so that we're not scrambling at the last minute to have that extra little pocket of money. The aerators and the bar screen, it's a $738,000 project that was approved. Our American Rescue Plans, our first half of it is covering that. So it's a little bit of a stress relief when you look at the financial statements. We've got future funding plans for our wastewater treatment plant. Marcy and Keith and I have all been working out the different, how do we do this? What steps do we move forward? We've worked with the Water Development Board, you know, what loans and grants and what's available. We're actually working with TWIC, which is another board that actually is a board of advisors. You have the USDA, you have the Water Development Board, you have TCQ members. It's kind of the brain trust for people like us who want that, what's the first step? Where can we get the help? And we're meeting with them next week to discuss what opportunities they have. A lot of the money coming down from the infrastructure bill is going to these larger entities, your USDA's or Water Development Board. They're the ones who are going to come back and say, what funding can we go for? What do we have available? What, you know, what's the opportunity? What's the first step? And we are on TCQ's radar. They know that we have issues, but we're trying our best to get these fixed. So we're hoping by having this meeting that we have some positive outcomes. You know, maybe USDA is going to offer us an 80% grant and a 20% loan. And then, you know, that would be much easier to manage, 4.6 million. And but we're also looking at, how do we ensure that when we start this process, that this is the direction we go, that we meet all those checkboxes? And it's not just a one-page application, it's a book. So we've already taken the steps to get a rate study done. And there is a Communities Unlimited, which is an organization that helps small rural areas with things like this at no cost. They are put in place to help us do the things that may cost 20 to 30 grand for free and then help us go into the funding side of it as well. So we've already done the initial steps to get a rate study started. Unfortunately, I know Keith would like it done by the end of this fiscal year, but their estimated timeline would be about November. And it's a lot of data collecting. It's a lot of information. They look at all of our operating expenses. They look at it for several years. What does it take for us? How many work orders? What do we have going on within our city? And we have to take into consideration our debt as well. And we actually budget our debt accordingly. And unfortunately, the water and wastewater hold quite a bit of that. So it's taking that into consideration when we're looking at rates. Are we charging what we should be charging to make ends meet? So this is something that's really important for the city to get under their belt. We've already taken those initial steps. The big upcoming, and I'm sorry, my picture's probably not the best, but the alley in Rio, Ally is our receptionist, and Rio's the administrative assistant for streets, have worked really hard on taking all of the information from Eddie's brain and putting it on paper. So we've developed, and right now it's in Google Form, it's a map, and it shows you what's been silcoated and what's been paved for the past several years. It gives the residents an idea of, okay, this is what we've done. And then how are we moving forward? You know, we're going to add those additional little flags. You know, these are this fiscal year, or is it the following fiscal year? But we wanted to give you a visual of what's been done with the city the past couple years. The purple color dots are the Silco projects. And then the maroonish red ones are the fully reconstructed that Jared has done. And you'll notice that there are concentrated areas, but it's all over the city of Alpine. We don't just focus on one area, we focus on several. So this will be uploaded to our website soon. And we're really excited about that. And we have a draft copy or version of the purchasing policy, the capital asset policy. These are big structural things for the city of Alpine. This provides the guidance not only to the departments, but it also keeps us in line with what we need to do for procurement for all of our federal and state grants as well. There are procedures and processes that we must follow, and it probably sounds like a broken record. And but state law, it's important because when we go out for these grants, we don't want that audit to come back and says, you didn't follow. Or we don't want the federal government, we just literally had an internal audit on one of our government grants from Office of the Governor, not on the finance side, but on the procedural side. And do we have everything that they're requiring? The quotes, the documentation, the information? So we do. We do really well at trying to make sure we get everything possible, which is why my office is always full of paper. And we want to document and have everything. Having these policies in place will help the city. And it provides the guidance to departments. It also provides the guidance to vendors to understand that there are procedures we have to follow. You can't just drive up and say, hey, I got a generator for you to buy. There are procedures. Um, the asset policy is a big one and I think every person who's been in this seat has, has brought this up, is understanding what do we have in the city? Um, for the longest time, it's kind of been like, we're trying, we're trying, we're trying. But this is an actual policy that will say, what's considered an asset, what's the definition of an asset, who's responsible for the asset, how do we record the asset? What's the threshold for the asset, what's the depreciation for the asset, it's not a guessing game, it's literally the, the, the book that they check off, this is what we have to do for an asset. Currently, anything over $2,500 that has a useful life of one year or more is an asset. Um, and that's hard when you have every department purchasing as much as possible to get their jobs done. We have to go back through and we have to find, okay, they made a purchase for $2,500, but is it an asset or is it 15 different items? So this kind of outlines that a little bit more and puts some structure to it, so when a purchase is made, departments are fully aware that, okay, I need to let them know this is an asset. I need to let them know that this is what we're doing because we go through hundreds of invoices and purchases a week. We don't always remember, we don't always catch them all, so we want to put that structure in place. Um, updated information. Uh, the gas utility rate for the May billing, which is April usage, will be $13.40. Um, we use less than what we were contracted for, so our rate at 32 cents was added to it. Um, and this will of course will be made public, um, to, uh, the Facebook page with the police department and then on our city website. Um, the city website, Gio has done an awesome job, um, we were allowed a redesign, a redo. Um, after the fourth year, the fifth year into the contract, so, we are actually updating our current website and we did send out a PSA because the website can't be updated starting tomorrow. Because they're going to migrate all the data to the new design. So we looked at other cities to find a little bit more of a friendly, um, user-friendly appearance to it, um, color scheme, structure. And so we are updating it, the migration is from May 18th to the 20th. Um, we're hoping it doesn't go past that, they revise is also under the impression it won't as well. Um, once that new design is in place, we kind of have a couple of weeks, I believe, to kind of play with it, to make sure everything is where it needs to be. And then, uh, it will go live, so it is structured a little bit differently, um, it still has all the same features that are required. Um, you'll, if you notice on our current one, we have little bubbles for employment, for financial transparency. Um, those are still there, they've just been moved to the side. Um, same dropdown menus, um, it's just a cleaner feel to it. Um, the paving, uh, we are currently just pending the performance bond with Jared, um, I and Eddie have reached out. Um, this is one of those state things that is required. Um, he has been working on that to get it to us. Um, so we will start after Hancock, which is where he's currently located, up in, in Ward Fives area. Uh, he will move to the Alpine Country Club Estates and the taxiway to get those taken as well, and then he'll finish the contract from 1920. And we'll get those all taken care of. And then thanks to Keith's very positive email to me today. Um, so we are nervous about the water usage, um, without rain and I do hope everyone does pray for rain. Um, we are monitoring our wells, um, a lot closer than we typically would. Um, the demand for water has increased significantly. Um, I know that the guys are up late making sure tanks are full so that when you wake up, you can have, you know, a nice hot pressured shower. Um, all of the bigger entities or larger consumption users have been asked to kind of take a step back, um, not use as much. Um, I did ask today if our city pool would be able to be filled. Um, I feel that this is a big asset considering we have not had rain. For our public to enjoy a cool, relaxing place to swim, to have their kids have, you know, some time off. So as of today, we are scheduled to fill the pool next week for Memorial Weekend. If that does change, we will make it very public and let everyone know. Uh, we are hoping not because we have 18 lifeguards. Um, we are beyond ecstatic, that is the most we've had in a long time, these are very enthusiastic high school kids coming in. Um, I personally think they all like to get a good tan, but I know that's not the case. Um, they actually enjoy, a lot of them are from last year, they're, they're coming back, it's a great summer job, it gives them the opportunity to interact with the public, their friends, um, everyone tends to go to the pool. Unless we have a lot of rain, it will be open this whole summer. Um, but Keith is monitoring that as well so that if something does come up and we're not able to fill the pool, um, we don't want to ask our neighbors not to water and then let's use a huge chunk of it. Um, so we are taking that into consideration, but we are excited to have that pool open for everybody. On the revenue and expense. My last slide. Um, so currently the general fund is at 62% of, 62.8% of the revenue, which is about 3.9 million. And their expenditures are about 2.5 or 40%. Most of our big expenses are going to come out the next three months. And this is all of our paving, this would be all of Jared's invoices, this will be all the material purchased for all the seal coating. Um, this is when we see a, a huge chunk of that money come out. Um, for water and wastewater, they're estimated at 48% of revenue, which is 20, or 2.8 million. And then 41.7%, which is about 2.4, uh, million in expenses. We also see the, the switch here with the revenue during the summer months, their revenue will increase as more people utilize water. Um, we do have people who have, you know, their little pool set up, they want their green yards. Um, we aren't fully discouraging, but we are asking people to be more, um, careful with the water usage. Um, we really don't want to have to go into that direction of a, the drought contingency plan. Um, the airport fund, um, they brought in about 77% or 507,000 and expenses are at 80%, about 526,000. Um, there is of course, always monitoring on this one, um, it's really hard. They don't have the logo room, but they have the expenses, that they have the things that come up, um, we can't just close the doors and walk away. Um, gas prices have increased, but even though we're charging accordingly, you know, we are paying accordingly as well and they have to maintain the facility. Um, I know that they're very fortunate without the rain, they don't have to mow. Um, so that, that's a benefit, but it is also something that we have to take in consideration. As the more maintenance we need to put into the airport, we, we will have to monitor it closely. Um, the taxiway that's coming out of here at the beginning of the, the year, I, I did bring to the council's attention that we had received 32,000 from, ARPA funds for the airport specifically. Um, we claimed those based off of fuel, um, Tech Star came back and said, get reimbursed for fuel expenses. Um, and then gave us the timeline of when we could get reimbursed, um, expenses were made, so this was a cash flow that came in that wasn't anticipated. This is how we're paying for that part of the taxiway with the other half being covered by the ramp front. So before this was all put into place for that taxiway, we made sure we had these covered. Um, so this is kind of a wash when you look at it in the system. The hotel occupancy tax fund, they're at about 46% of their income, which is about 410,000. And they're at 55% of their expense, which is about 484,000. Um, the big chunk of their expense, of course, has been that remodel and, and the new construction with the visitor center. Um, council had previously allotted part of their fund balance towards that, so, um, despite the fact that they're under roughly 58% of where they should be at the end of April, um, they're still in line, um, from the fund balance side, so they're still doing great. Um, we anticipate that we will probably have a lot of visitors this summer, I, I know the traffic has started, we're getting more people coming in. We have a lot of great events over the, the summer, the multicultural, the Viva Big Ben, we've got the wine and beef feast. At the end of this month, there, there's a lot of things they're going to start bringing people in. Um, the gas utility, they're at 71% of their income, which is about 1.4 million and 56% of their expenses, which is about 1.1 million. Um, Randy is really good with maintaining his budget. Um, he is willing to compromise as far as if I can't get it this year, let's make sure we get it in the budget for next year. Um, one of the things that all the departments are struggling with is really just the cost of things. Um, our expenses are slightly higher. When we look at the budget last year, of course, you know, we're thinking, okay, these are the projects we want to complete, all of the departments went out and got some quotes, like, okay, what roughly do we need? Prices have gone up about 25%. Um, so what we budgeted at 25% of it and then that's what it's costing us today. So they're taking a step back and they're like, okay, what do I actually have to have in order to get this completed? And then of course, um, we're putting things back into the capital improvement fund, capital assets, so that we can be prepared for this upcoming year. Um, we are very hopeful that, you know, as they're moving through all of their projects, that we can start utilizing some of the, the buy boards, the, the purchasing co-ops, the USDA funding availabilities. We're looking at every little aspect and revenue source that we can go after to fill in the gaps that we don't have. So the city is not in a horrible position at all, we're in a good position. It's just understanding that we want to do so much moving forward, you know, we, we want to redo all of our streets, we want to redo all of our infrastructure. We want employees to, to benefit from, from a, a, a nice pay scale, from merit raises to moving up to employee package. We want the citizens to have easily accessible to information, um, to make things easier for everyone. So we're, we really are working towards finding all of those little gaps and loopholes to, to ensure we can move that direction. The last one, of course, is our interest in thinking, um, this one won't change, um, dramatically until the end of the year when we make our next debt payment. Um, we are at 98% of our, of revenue, which is 147,000 and our expenses are at 92%. Um, because we've made our first debt payment already. Um, this is only the general fund debt, um, the portion that is tied to the water and wastewater actually comes out of that, but. Um, so their portion is covered with their operating stuff that we budget accordingly for. And then this is what is actually part of the INS rate, which is part of the property tax that covers what the general fund, um, allocated towards themselves.
I have a question, Megan, you say that we've got the larger expenses coming here towards the end and we're already at 92%?
For the, that's for INS. Okay. INS, we don't have another expense until August, the general fund is where the larger one, so we're at 40%, we should roughly be at 58%. So the big expenses are our paving.
Thank you.
And one last item, um, I did receive an email late last night in regards to our status of our checking accounts. Um, we are required, it's the only finding that we've had, um, where we have too much money in our checking accounts. Um, when we have too much money and it's not covered, it's not collateralized, it becomes a finding, we, we need to protect our money. So yesterday, um, I did receive an email, um, we have too much money in our checking accounts, so, um, I did transfer money out today, it went to the Tech Star account, um, which is the general fund account I pulled from the general fund so that we would be with under, with, under that balance, um, so that we would be protected. Um, it does have roughly the same interest rate currently as our checking account. Um, one of the things as we move forward with the budget process is looking at that financial policy. I'm in establishing actual checking account rates or levels. Um, currently, most of our money is in a checking account, not in our reserve account. All of our reserve accounts except for Tech Star are allocated for specific purchases and reasons. Um, our hot one is specifically for hot improvements. Um, the capital improvements is specifically for roads, these were all done through ordinances so that money is tied up for those specific projects. But creating kind of an operating general fund that lets us move that money over so that we don't have these large checking accounts. Um, and that money can be protected under a reserve account. Um, the next big step for the city would be to look at how we spend money. Um, I do keep about a five-year spreadsheet, um, with our, our cash flows to understand what we actually need in a checking account and then what we can put in a reserve or invest. Um, the more we're able to invest and, and put that money into even just a basic CD or, you know, any type of other investment that the city chose to go after will help build up that interest. Um, interest rates aren't always the best, but every little bit counts, so the city is at that standing point where we got too much in our accounts. Um, so the money was moved to protect the city. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to city staff updates, Jessica.
City, anyone? Um, I'm presenting for the Building Services Department and Code Compliance. Um, this evening, it's been a while since I've seen you guys. Um, to start off, um, we're going to start with January, it's kind of just numbers for now. The total permits that were pulled were 43 in January. Um, the permit fees were $5,059.41. And the valuation of estimated, um, material labor costs is $465,300. And out of the 43 permits, there are 40 inspections made. And in February, it looks very similar, we had 43 permits pulled. And we had, uh, $7,215.62 in permit fees. And for the valuation was $720,139. And there were 28 inspections. For March, there were 44 permits pulled and $5,946 to manage the permits. And for the valuation was $472,883.86. And, uh, there were 40 inspections made in March. And then in April, we had 34 permits pulled, $4,742.24 with permit fees. And for project valuation was $853,794. And 40 inspections were made in April. That's the boring part, the numbers. For the exciting part for the department though, is that we recently with the code compliance have somebody working with us part-time right now. Um, Adelina Bell, uh, is with Environmental Services, she's going to be working part-time with me in that department to help. And we both completed the course for basic code enforcement and in July is our projected time for our test to be licensed as code enforcement. Um, so that's exciting to see that we might have to license code enforcement in our department. Um, and with that, we've been working diligently with illegal dumping, um, obviously that's a problem and with TDS's new contract. It's just something that's a lot on the community's mind as far as the way that our community looks with things just thrown by the dumpsters, so, um, our door hangers, which I spoke about in our last meeting, um, have been working really well and have been really successful and the response, the response rate has been really great and so, um, we're really excited about that, the outreach program that we're doing and, um, trying to reach out to as many people as possible and giving them the, the monthly pickup times and how to do it and just trying to help anybody and everybody that possibly has gotten into the bad habit of doing it wrong or just doesn't know better. Um, and then also we sent out grease trap letters, um, to help the wastewater system, we haven't had grease trap letters sent out since 2019. And so, um, we have been, or I've been working diligently to keep up with that as far as, um, having them send in their logs quarterly, this is going to be the first quarter, so every quarter they're going to turn in their, um, cleanout logs and, um, send in information letting them know that they're doing it properly. Um, and so that's really exciting because hopefully that will help a little bit with our wastewater system. Um, with planning and zoning, um, there are a couple of new things that are exciting that they're having in Alpine. The Alpapalote Nursery is now open, which is the nursery that's out going towards the triangle. Um, and they've received their certificate of occupancy, so I'm not sure about, um, their grand opening, but they are completed with construction and ready to open. Um, Alpine Wine also got their certificate of occupancy and they're now serving in public. And that's on 116 North Fifth Street. And we are currently working to do a planning and zoning workshop, that's something, um, that's going to be scheduled in the, the near future. Um, just to help, um, the commissioners understand our, what we're doing and how we're doing it. And, um, so that's something that I look forward to presenting to you later in the future. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, very colorful.
Good luck on your test.
I work with Jessica, she's done a good job, she works hard.
All right, Environmental Services, Adelina.
Environmental Services update. Um, I'm going to go over the recycling center stats, the Alpine High School demo project update. The, or the 2022 monthly book pickup totals, um, illegal dumping abandonment totals and the keep up a beautiful update. Uh, this slide just shows the, the visitors we had to the center, we still are 65% Alpine residents and 35% outside with an average of 327 Alpine residents a month to 176 outside, count outside a city. Um, this slide shows, uh, the drop-off till April 2020 on each item. The visitors check us, I inform and, and they select what they're dropping off and this is, this is the total. Next slide. Um, these are the, the landfill numbers, um, so far on CND, we have left 3,744 tons for the year and for municipal solid waste, we have 2,506 tons left for the year. Let's see, um, total recycled till April 2020 was 327.75 US tons with, which approximately equals 16 days of landfill space. Total recycled till April twenty-twenty was three hundred twenty-seven point seventy-five US tons, which approximately equals sixteen days of landfill space. The totals for the Alpine High School demo, they're only using the Imperial Construction Company. And they're up to a hundred and ninety-three tons for this fiscal year. Now to bulky pickup totals. For the May, month of April, we didn't have any legal abatement because we were figuring out the procedure. So this is just for bulky and the tonnage is just for bulky. For May is a combination of bulky and illegal abatement mixed together in our totals for the culled and the tons so far. Next slide. These are the bulky recycling containers at the recycling center. As you can see, before the contract, we were averaging two point two containers per month. Now that we started the new contract and we are hauling as soon as they're full, we are averaging four point five containers per month. The chart on the right side hand, that's showing our average visitors. Before the contract, we had sixteen or so average drop-ups a month of bulky at the center. And now that we are doing the community outreach and promoting the recycling containers, we have an average of thirty-eight point five visitors a month. This month, for illegal abatement, we identified thirty-eight sites. Fifteen of those were abated by the community through the community outreach program, leaving the flyers, talking to the residents. Fifteen others were abated and twenty-three were submitted for abatement, which was a sixty cubic yards of waste picked up, which it was roughly thirty-nine point four seven percent of all the sites were abated before we, by residents. So the people didn't know that they couldn't put it there, so they cleaned it up before. One thing that changed before I submitted my report, the cubic yardage is a little bit high on the standard national average. We decided to go with two hundred and fifty pounds per cubic yard, yards. But because our material is packed so loosely in our trucks, we have changed it now to a hundred. So instead of making a seven point five, it should be three tons. But I'll update those bread cheeses as we go every presentation. And so it would have been sixty cubic yards times a hundred divided by two thousand and eight, three cubic yards, I mean, three tons. Keep up a beautiful update. This year, McDonald's donated fifty-two bucks for volunteers with a total of two hundred and twenty-four and fifty cents and fifty dollars and fifty cents. The great, we had two great American cleanups in the spring. The Cub Scouts did the regular cleanup on the creek, an approximate one point three miles with thirty-three volunteers, and they collected thirty-two trash bags and six recycling, totaling two hundred and sixty tons of pounds of trash and sixty pounds of recyclables. Also, the football, local football team, they volunteered and they cleaned up a mile of city streets and collected eight hundred and forty pounds of trash. All right, with keep up a beautiful update, we hosted Earth Day on April twenty-second at Coconut Park, and it was a great event. There was live music, a bouncy castle, yard game for kids, painting, a mural painting, flower planting, and information booths. There was food from Our Lady of the Peace Church and an art contest for dark skies with council member Ms. Stokes. It was really nice. The event went really well, and I really want to thank all, everybody that helped with this event, especially Heather, Yadon, before going on maternity leave, Darren Nance, Chris and Lucy at the visitor center, Jess and Mr. Seager and Priscilla from the Water Department, and Jessica Boers with Coats. They all help and were aside, giving information to people. Also, I would like to thank our sponsors, JMC Bouncers, Camilla and his family. They always donate the equipment in the time to these events. True Value donated seeds and soil for the giveaways, and Printco donated the event flyers for to promote the event. Our next, our next keep up a beautiful event will be a community cleanup last week in May, Saturday, May twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, or until our containers are full. So we'll have four roll-up containers for bulky. We're going to be taking free tires from residents. No businesses or commercial sources. We've been promoting this event through our community outreach. If we're driving around and we see households with a lot of tires, we drop off the flyer and let them know that they can bring us tires. Any questions on that? My next slide, our next monthly book pickup will be June twenty-two. The scheduling is May thirtieth to Friday, June third, by noon. And they need to call the TDS number four-three-two-eight-three-seven-zero-eight-four-five, and they can schedule a pickup. I'm adding my information on where you can find either Call Me or Email or our Facebook pages or the City Web, City Web page. Any questions?
Have you all started collecting glass again at the recycling center?
We're in the process. Are switching our container. We submitted it to TDS, so hopefully by midweek or the end of this week.
I'm just glad you're doing the tire pickup because that is a big eyesore. And so I thank you for doing that and dropping off.
We normally charge, but the residents can take it opportunity this event.
Is there a limit, the tires?
Not necessarily, but it has to be residential. Like if you have a business and change tires, you have to have a way of this.
So wages can't come as a bonus.
We could charge it though.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Adalina. Thank you. Okay, so moving on, public hearings. There are none. Consent agenda, City Secretary?
Tonight's consent agenda has one item, approval of May tenth, twenty-twenty-two workshop and special meeting minutes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve May tenth, twenty-twenty-two special meeting minutes.
Move that we approve the May tenth, twenty-twenty special meeting minutes.
I need a second. Okay, discussion? Okay, raise your right hand if you agree to approve the minutes. Okay, unanimous, motion passes. Moving on to information or discussion items. City Manager?
We have Mr. Darren Nance here with us for our Parks and Recreation update.
Good evening, Council. Darren Nance, Board Three, and Park Chairman. I've got a short little presentation for you guys of the last, things you've done in the last three months or quarterly. So I'll just jump right in. First thing I wanted to do was talk about the partners of the parks, Big Park Recreation for Kids. They had a ice cream sold for recently, May first, in Deana Park. It was well attended. I came in a little late at the end, but they elected new officers. Letty Correa was the president. They've got a new one, Katie Santos. Already reached out to her, or she reached out to me, actually. And she's going to be gone at the beginning of the summer, but they're going to start work again for fundraising and kind of get stuff started with Splashpad again. What else was that a comment? There was an article in the paper, I think, last week on the Splashpad and everything else, so kind of getting that all built in again. I wanted to thank Keep Up on Beautiful, exactly what Adalina Deal just said a second ago about Earth Day. Thank you everyone for that. City workers and everyone else that attended and that helped. I don't since the last update. So I looked at our agendas of the last three months to kind of just put those items here so we could go over them. One was, we discussed updates to American Legion Park. Really, that's all for future reference. We've got big parks, a big project for Pueblo and Waymo still happening. So that's going to be probably a two-year-plus project, I think, by the time everything gets crewed and constructed. So we were just kind of brainstorming with American Legion Park, seeing if there's anything we could do more current or to postpone that project for a little bit. Another big one, updates to Coconut Dog Park. We're working with Janine Bishop from Alpine Humane Society. And thank you for the resolution that you guys passed to get that thing going so we could work with them. Janine's already got a fundraiser page up, so I got that in here as well. And I think we've already raised about four hundred and fifty. We're shooting for about eight thousand total on the thing, but talking to Adam Yannis, who's with the Boag Program, the welding program at the high school, cost for the actual shade structure should be, we're thinking around three, three to four thousand, depending on cost of material. And if we can get any donations or anything else like that. So the number we're shooting at eight thousand, the shade structure will be a lot less. But we're hoping to landscape a little bit of the area, maybe get some dog stuff for the humane society and, you know, fix it up, do what we can there. Another idea is discuss ideas for Earth Day. We, you know, just brainstorm ideas on that, shout that over to Adalina. She worked with Heather and they did all planning for Earth Day. Talked to Adalina. She's already thinking about next year for that. Just go get her. And last one, discuss safety issues at Baines Park. There is no fence line on that north end of Baines Park, so sometimes it falls, get past that, the basketball line or anything else. It's all downhill from there. So those will go into Diego Street. So we were kind of looking at that, just seeing if there was any solution. And without putting up a fence or something to kind of stop that area, there's nothing that we could really think of immediately. I think it's a rare enough issue that, you know, it's not pressing. I think we're going to be looking at for the upcoming three months. Primary one is update ordinances and send to council for approval. So standardizing rules for the parks. This would include hours, allowing alcohol in certain parks. And we are going to host a workshop. We're working with you. I got to get the information for him. Our next meeting will actually have a workshop, and that way the public can attend and kind of give us their ideas on what they think, especially for alcohol in the park. See what they think about that. And we are also looking at other cities currently to kind of see what their ordinances are concerning that. Second one, create event permitting process. That's another one where we're kind of, we've looked at some other cities. Ben Struthers on the board has actually put something together as far as that to kind of start an application for that so citizens can do that. I think the hope is to have things like the music events and other things at the park, utilize the parks as a resource for the city for events. Another one, discuss parks prioritization. This is one that we've got five employees in parks, I believe. There's twelve city parks. So, and I think they're now tasked with kind of watering along the one ways as well. So there's a lot of work for less people. So on that, we are going to hopefully have two workshops on that to reach out to the public and get their opinions. And kind of, really what I'm super hoping for is that the public attends it and lets us know how they utilize the parks, even the ones that are less utilized. American Legion or anything else. If it's walking, walking dogs, somebody said they fly kites out there because there's no power lines. Things that we may not necessarily think about. If we do the outreach to the public and kind of see what they find important. And the last one was discuss integrating night skies into a city park. Already spoke with Laura Gold the other day on that one, and we were going to postpone that. We were looking at double decos to utilize that. And the problem is, it's such a small park, the horizon, you can always see pretty much directly over you and at certain angles. I attended McDonald's Observatory Star Night recently, and they really want you to be able to see a broad section of the, so you can see stars on horizon to get a more three-sixty of the sky. So Laura was kind of wondering where in the city we can do that to find a park that would really utilize that asset. So that project has been put on hold. This was data that Gio got for us when we started looking at the rentals. This is the number from twenty-twenty-one for the Coconut Pavilion rentals. There was forty-four that year in twenty-twenty-one. And you can see, just so you guys can kind of see some of the data, how that pavilion is actually utilized. Nothing in January or December, I guess. Nobody wants to go out there and chill. But you can see it picks right up in the spring. That's the busiest month is probably April, May, June right there. And then Taylor's off in the fall, which I was kind of surprised by because our fall's typically beautiful. Other one is out of forty-four rentals, only two of them were on days that weren't the weekend. So forty-two out of forty-four were Saturday, Sunday. Only two were not on the weekend, and those were both in the summertime when, I don't think necessarily holidays, but during the actual week. That is, Gio could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's twenty-five dollars a permanent day currently to rent the pavilion. So we're kind of looking at that price structure and seeing how that works. City, when they budget, I think they're budgeting in about a thousand and fifteen, a hundred and four million revenue from that. But the city, of course, actually has, they have to pick up trash, you know, mow the area and everything else. So they do have cost for that. So that's one thing to kind of just think about there. And the last one, I was just going to throw this in there. This is the donation page, but if anyone wants to donate to the shade structure, where we're raising money for Alpine Humane Society, I want to see how to get the dark shade structure. So I was going to see if there's any questions?
Well, as hot as it's been, that would be really nice to have.
And it would be immediate. You don't have to grow a tree.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Councilmember Stokes?
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash oh-five dash oh-two, and ordinance amending chapter ten, animals amending article one in general, amending article four, dangerous animals, providing an updated dangerous dog determination process and providing updated definitions. I sat through this meeting and they just want to change some of the wording. It is, they're not actually changing anything. There are just changes in wording, so.
I'll entertain a motion.
I still move.
Second? Any discussion?
Let's give us a brief, see what they wanted to change so good.
Something had happened and they had, they had a dog that got upset because of what was happening around it. And that dog was not a dangerous dog. It had been injured and everybody upset the dog, which made it dangerous at that point. But you don't want to deem the dog a dangerous dog and have it put to sleep when it was just injured. And something happened with Jennifer. She questioned all of it, and that's what started this. So it'll just make it to where if your dog is it and everybody goes after it and it's upset and hurt, it's not, once it's healed, it's not a dangerous dog. And that was what I got out of the meeting. That is what I was, because it says was not being provoked. So the owner was upset and it just turned into a big, she had to deem it a dangerous dog because somebody got it. She didn't want to have to do that for somebody's dog, which is hurt. There's a difference between dangerous and hurt.
Basically, it's an issue of provocation.
Yes, yes. Any other? Okay, so raise your right hand if you're in favor. Passes unanimously. Okay, second item. City Manager?
Approve resolution twenty-two dash oh-five dash fourteen, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development Community Facilities Grant Program.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I still move.
Okay, I need a second. Any discussion?
Just a little background. So the city has budgeted twenty thousand towards a new mower. This grant is a forty-five match, so we basically take our twenty thousand and they add that difference so that we can buy something better equipped to handle roughly a thousand acres of parks. So we're utilizing that one little grant opportunity to fill in. Instead of getting the minimal baseline mower, we're trying to get something a little bit bigger and better.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Third item, City Manager?
Approve tech share in our local purchasing agreement.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I still move.
Second? Okay, any discussion?
A little, I just feel like I need to put some background in there. So the city has, we were members of- So the city has, we were members of several co-ops. This one came up on my radar when I was looking at some of the vendors we utilize, especially under the water department. They're actually listed in this tech share program that we are not a member of. We are a member of about seven other co-ops. This one was kind of important specifically as the price of materials goes up. This program does all of our required procurement. They meet all the state regulations as far as RFPs, doing all of the legwork for us, and then we get to reap the benefits. So several of the vendors that our water utility uses are actually under this program that offer roughly twenty-five to fifty percent off the cost of the material. So I wanted to take full advantage as we continue to make repairs for our infrastructure, so we can get that little bit of this.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on, the city council member comments. We'll start with council member Stokes.
Always have comments, guys.
Good.
Congratulations, Chris, Martine, and Mayor Eaves. I don't know if anybody's really said that or not. We look forward to it. Bye, Andy. Hopefully, we'll see you sitting out there.
Yes.
Yes, and if you have a comment, Andy, you have to go ahead. Thanks, Jessica, Adalina, and Darren. Those are great reports. I know y'all put a lot of time into them, and we kid, and they're colorful and all that, but they are very, very helpful in us making decisions.
I think that's it.
I too wanted to welcome Mayor Eaves. I look forward to working under your leadership. And I also wanted to wish a happy birthday to our city manager, Megan Andrew.
Happy birthday.
I want to say. Where's the cake?
Our new mayor, and glad to have you with us. Thank you.
I just agree with what you were saying. Welcome to you, and to Chris. We have a good council going. You've become a part of a very unique part of Alpine. And the elected officials that plan for the future of this town. So I know you'll do a great job and we support you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I also wanted to thank Adalina and Jessica and Darren for their presentations. They are very helpful. We appreciate the time that it takes for you to do that. And of course, all of our corporate sponsors, McDonald's, Print Co., True Value, for their donations. And I want to thank everyone, all the residents, for the wonderful turnout to vote. We had a record-setting turnout. The only one that beat us is when there was a presidential election tied, tied to it. So we appreciate that. We want to see community involvement. We like you being here. We need you to be here, and we need your input. So thank you all for being here this evening. Nothing else, meeting adjourned.